I will call the meeting to order.
And now we read that little piece.
Meetings of board selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded.
Well, thank you for calling the board's meeting to order. Do either of the other board members have anything to add? Did you have a fun Halloween?
Yes.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I got so much candy.
Oh, boy!
Some of it... Emily donated most of my candy to the food pantry. Mostly Snickers.
Very nice.
We kind of pretend us eating our favorite candy and Arch Emes's candy was a horror movie. I just started eating a Snicker and she's just like, "Ahh."
A lot of candy. Well, you guys did a great job on your pumpkins. You should be very proud of yourselves and I think you all deserve a round of applause. I like working with this board.
Is there anything that you want to bring up for issues that you'd like to discuss with the town?
No.
That's okay.
Like free fudge bars.
Free ice cream.
Free ice cream for everyone!
Need to make a motion and then vote.
Soft serve.
Free ice cream soft serve.
I love her.
Free fudge ice cream, be hard, and need extra time to finish.
Just free ice cream, anytime.
Stealing candy from your parents!
So what if you... So what if you should say... Why don't you say, "I move..."
Was it Bowery?
It was stealing.
Excuse me, board members. One board member, I'm going to ask you to say, "I move that we have free ice cream."
I move that we have free ice cream.
And you, at the end, you say, "I second that motion."
I second that motion.
And now, the chair, you say, "All in favor?"
All in favor.
And then each of you says, "Aye."
Aye.
Whoa, it's your name in this!
Alright, shall we do a picture and then send them on their way? Okay. You want to stand behind him?
You all look very official.
Yeah.
Oh, can you hold up your certificates, please?
Oh.
So the camera can see.
And here we have our junior selectmen. You're the guys of the first, you realize, for doing this.
We are.
You are. Pretty good, huh?
Me, this is the... We are the first people to ever win this?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
We're the first kids!
You are the first kids. Well done.
First kids to ever make free ice cream.
There you go.
As far as my friend Will wanted free ice cream.
We don't make the ice cream, they give it to us for free.
Well, in a few years, we'll help you run your campaign.
But when I turn 18, I don't think... I probably will move somewhere else.
No, you have to stay here.
Really?
Now you're obligated to stay here.
That's right.
You have to do a petition for your ice cream in your school.
We all heard that.
Alright. Would the board like to recess for a minute?
The board would like to recess. Alright, thank you, kids.
Thank you.
You are done. You made a great job. The meeting is adjourned.
Okay. We're returning from recess, from our previous board of selectmen. And I believe the announcement was already read, that we are recorded and our voice and image may be recorded. We have minutes to approve of October 21st and October 28th? October 21st is ready, October 28th is... Okay. Alright, so do I hear a motion to approve October 21st?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Is there any changes or questions? Nope. Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Correspondence. No correspondence, correct? Okay. General public comment. Nope.
I'm sorry, is that open to the public?
That is, yes. We have some guidelines over here.
Is it in reference to your local business?
Through the chair, the board will accept any public comments during this general public comment period. Yes. Okay.
Alright. I've never done this before, so I apologize. I'm new to it.
Okay.
Alright. I actually am in a... Should I stand? I'm an employee of the flat company. The new owners, not Greg Smith, okay? Greg Smith is out of the equation. And all the paperwork has been done. However, all the licensing is causing a problem for our employees. They have kids. It's the holiday season. And I want to address you to see if we can expedite this because we have children, families that can't pay their rent. And the new owners are compliant, they're great people, and we need to work together as a community, okay? So what is it we can do to get them up and operational? Because in my honest opinion, I've had a liquor license, me and my husband, we're buying the Hudson House, and I've gone through this. But what we do is we give it to the community, okay? We want to help Berlin. We've got a great company. What is it we can do?
At this point in time, I think the time is needed for putting out mailings, which you're obligated to do.
We got a petition, we have 131 signatures, but I have to be honest with you, alright? I'm retired law enforcement. I work for the federal government. It's... We're hitting walls. We're hitting walls, okay? So what is it we can do? I just worked there four days for 12 hours a day, power cleaning. So when your inspectors go in, fire department, Berlin chief, captain...
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal, I can guarantee you, and I'll put my name on it. She was in there today. This young woman right here. She was in there today. That place is clean. We are up to code.
Well, what... I think you had received...
What is it we gotta do? Something in this town is stopping the owners from getting their liquor license, but here's the outcome. Let's just say they don't get a liquor license. It's affecting your town, your tax dollars, because that's the revenue that brings to your town.
Okay. Thank you.
Joan can take it somewhere else and give their money.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You had received... So through the chair, I... Yes. And I apologize, I can't remember your first name.
Kristina.
Kristina.
Yes, and I apologize.
Kristina has visited us a couple of times and she came in today and I gave her an update on everything we're doing. We are doing our due diligence to move the applications through, public safety reviews. Those have been sent out to our local inspectors...
Correct.
And local public safety officials for their review of the application materials. And I believe the owners were also notified today about the text that has to appear in the notice.
No, they were not.
Yeah, they received an email today.
Oh, maybe through email.
Yes, it was through email, yes.
Because I left there at 5:00.
Yeah, and I can speak to that because I was copied on that.
Okay.
So that is going to be... The owners will have to place the ad newspaper. The hearing is scheduled for November 18th and I can assure you that we are doing our due diligence here to keep the process moving so that the license hearing on... So that the license hearing on November 18th goes smoothly.
Right, and I totally believe you. We've met, but my question is, the pastor and the Greg Smith, okay? He's crooked. I don't know what he's done or whatever, but we ran into an issue with him today that the internet, the cable, everything, you know, it feels like the new owners are suffering from the old owner. So what can I do as their only full-time employee that I had to leave work early and I lose money? I have employees that work there with babies. I mean, come on, this is the first of the month this happened. And now we're running into Thanksgiving, they're going to put food on their table. What is it that the town wants them to do?
Through the chair, I know that we're not supposed to be engaging in dialogue, but I do... I want to respond. So I've gone over with you all the things that the town is doing on our end to try to make sure that documents are reviewed, that we're prepared for the liquor license process. I would encourage the new owners, the applicants for the license transfer...
Right.
To make sure that they are crossing their Ts and dotting their Is and working with their attorney to make sure that... Yes, and we're going to be addressing... The board is expected to address all three of the licenses all at once on the 18th. So you should be... They should be able to address all three of those at one time. So I would just recommend that the new owners, the applicants for the license transfer, have crossed all their Ts and dotted all their Is, make sure all their paperwork is in order, because that will allow the process to move more smoothly between the town and the ABCC.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
So that's the best I can make it, that I can...
So one more question, I promise I'll stop talking when my laryngitis. Looking at the fire marshal, and I'm sure there's other town people here. After that, you get four inspections, as we discussed today. Board of Health, fire inspection, police, chief of police...
And building commissioner.
Right. So I have spent five days in that building. This is why I have laryngitis. I power cleaned it. So can they do the inspections before the 18th? Does your fire department expect more? What is it that the town wants that these people need to do? That's my question.
Those are excellent questions. I don't know if the board would recognize... The building commissioner is not here to speak to the actual building commissioners' inspections, but... And I don't want to offer the information, however, however, reviews would be a part of this.
Right, I just want it on record that we will do whatever it takes. I am by the law, I took the oath, okay? If you want five sprinklers, I'll give it to you.
So let me ask you, Dave, do you do your inspections before we have our hearing?
It could be done that way. I know we've been working with the police chief and the building inspector to come up with a process for future and moving forward. I would recommend that that would take place. In fact, we just got the email this afternoon to respond to it and that was going to be one of my recommendations because we're, it's a new owner as well, we're into liquor license renewal season, that both myself and the building inspector go out...
Right.
And do our annual inspections. So moving forward, we could do this ahead of time, ahead of the hearing, and then we could come up with if there's any issues at that point...
And let us know.
They would know ahead of time.
Yeah. Okay.
And believe me when I say, Joan and Stephen, I speak for them, they are willing to comply, which we have, okay? And I guess just what I want to say is this, it's a little place. Berlin is a little place. We want to give a nice place where you can go, like a local place.
And I think it will be.
It will be.
It will be fine.
If everybody just goes by the rules and regulations...
That's right.
Like we're doing. But my major concern is if there's anything holding this back here in Berlin, I'm not talking Boston, we got families, these kids, it's...
Well, I think we're all going to do our best to do what we need to do before the 18th.
And please do.
Yes.
That's all I ask.
Thank you.
These employees and their babies need to eat, pay their rent, and put heat.
Okay.
And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. And by the way, sir, thank you for your service. Also you too.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our hearings and appointments and we have an appointment with our fire chief for a monthly report and some recognition.
Okay, we're going to proceed with the recognition, the monthly report.
Okay.
My lack of knowledge with the IMC that we use is I tried to run that tonight when I got in and I couldn't run that, so that'll be presented first thing. I got the fire marshal's report, that'll be given to Mary first thing in the morning, she can share it with you electronically.
No problem.
Yeah, it's just, given her the expertise, it's not something I don't have... Just don't have a lot of experience with. But the major reason... Well, the primary reason why we're here tonight is we had last week, three firefighters, Michelle Devault, Nick Durkin, and John Gallardo, graduated from the firefighter volunteer called 1-2 Academy at the Mass Fire Academy. They covered over 240 hours of training there. I'm going to give you a brief description about the training. This is the first class where they had the most they've ever had. They had eight female graduates and Michelle is one of those, so we're very proud of her. But it's today's environment, firefighters do more than fight fire. They're the first ones called to respond to chemical environmental emergencies ranging from the suspected presence of carbon monoxide to a gas leak that may be called to rescue a child that has fallen to the ice. They rescue people from stalled elevators and one of the things that... It was a common theme that I heard from the three people in watch is Michelle would be on their per diem shifts and they'd be studying, hitting the books so that they did well. All three of our candidates averaged above the classroom score of what the other students were, so all three did very, very well. And 200, like I said, 240 hours, and upon a successful completion of this program, all students have made the standard of National NFPA 1001. In addition, they have been certified to level of firefighter one hazardous materials first responder operational level, which is a really good skill to have out in the street. Very proud of them. And it's... I guess it's been part of the culture here in Berlin that when they were started, they were given orange helmets, okay? And I guess they got their butts busted at the academy, which is common for the fire service, while being pumpkin heads. So it's like, well, they took it well, I guess, they took it well. That's the fire service. If they get a little bit of dig at you, they'll take it, okay? But when they graduated, they get assigned these yellow helmets, given it to them. And another thing that's come to Berlin is these little cobbles. I see you cut this, there you go. It's common to get in a building and get tied up in some wire, cable, whatever it is, so they issue these so that they're in a pocket on the turnout gear, out, cut, free, yell, and run, and you keep going on your mission. So it's kind of like a special thing. They're marked, stamped with a name and on the other side is an accountability number, which is used to track firefighters when they're on the fire ground. Everyone gets assigned one and if you see it come up on the radio, you know who it is instantly. But they all did. Nick here, Michelle, and John are the three graduates, and I'd just like to give them a good hand and give them some recognition up here. So now that they're all... They're open for business now. It's like the bell rings, like, go on the step in the truck, in the fires, before they kind of like were in like a stand-back role in support for the structural fires. They've been right up front with emergency medicals, B&amp;M Ts, but they all did very well. And it's a happy moment for the fire department, but more especially for the town of Berlin.
Congratulations.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
We had a 7:15 National Grid poll petition hearing for 344 Randall Road. I'd like to call the hearing to order.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jeff Silver, National Grid.
Okay. So the first hearing is on 344 Randall Road. Do you want to fill us in? Do I need to read this?
West Randall? Can I go west?
Did you open the hearing? You opened. Yes, I opened. Okay.
That pole is being installed to straight line the existing poles. That way there's less anchoring.
Okay.
That's the only reason why they're doing it. Less stress on the lines.
Does the board have any questions? Does the audience have any questions on the hearing?
How long will it be without power?
A few hours. Typically, they put the pole in, depending on the distance that they're moving the pole, they'll run lines first and then make the connection. So you'll... And you may even be without power overnight while you're sleeping. You might even not even noticing.
Sir, you have... While I have to open that hearing, so why don't we do this one first? Is there any other questions on Randall Road? Do we like hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
That's a good question.
Alright, well, no, my only concern when you said it might be out of power a couple hours, not to play, you know?
So as of right now, we're anywhere from six to eight weeks out from doing installations and that's all contingent on stone duty, as we know, stones are coming and...
Well, and that's why I didn't know if it was going up this weekend.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it... No, there's a systematic process, so this is in the early stages. So it's the last of the schedule, which is again, six to eight weeks out, depending on stone-related incidents and everything else, so...
And do you give notification to...
They do.
Okay.
South Street, I was wrong. I'm early.
Oh, okay. Alright. So hold that question, right?
Well, it's a general question, how long is the power going to be out? You're all set.
Prepare for that a lot tonight.
I only got two more. Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. So we'll close that hearing and we'll talk about River Road... River Road West. And can you fill us in on that one?
River Road West is to put a three-phase bank for the closer, which helps with reliability in the electrical system.
Okay.
So will it be the same process for any power outages?
Same process. They'll put the equipment up first and then they'll quit changing.
So a couple hours maybe overnight, depending upon...
Okay, is there any questions from the audience? I should have asked you guys first. Did you have any questions?
No. I did. All set.
Hearing no questions, I'll call for a vote. Do I hear... Did I hear a motion?
So moved. So seconded.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is the first one. Oh, there's two signatures.
There's three.
Three.
I haven't seen you there in a while.
I know. Have to spread this hearing out a little bit. It really only does take a couple hours. There was one day you were swapping the pole out on Lyman and of course I went to work and there was nothing. Walked outside, guys, like a couple hours, I just packed everything up and came back down and came here. Easy peasy.
We try not to inconvenience people as much as we can. I don't want anybody to think it's our mission to inconvenience them.
You wait until someone's settling in at 10 o'clock to watch their favorite TV show and the coffee's not quite done?
I had a favorite call this weekend. Guy lost his cable, his favorite TV show, and he called 911.
Well, was it a good show?
I can't make it up. I can't make it up.
Wow.
They do the same thing when they... The power's out.
And it wasn't even us. It was the telephone. So we go out there and it wasn't even us.
Squirrel. Squirrel!
When in doubt, blame the squirrel.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll close that hearing and we will open the hearing for 163 South Street. And you want to tell us a little bit about that one?
163 South Street is the same as the last. They're going to be putting a closer up on the pole with a three-phase bank, more for reliability, and it's also to help with the DG site that's going on in the town. So kind of think of it as a huge circuit breaker. So if power... If lines come down by accident or there's something, a fault in the line, a squirrel, it re-engages the line there for... People aren't out for hours on end just for a squirrel. So what happens is it rules the fault off and tries again, and it does that three times. And if there's still a fault there, then it locks out and then we have to go fix and find the problem. But that helps with reliability because as we know squirrels cause damage and...
They do sometimes.
That's a way to prevent people from being out of power for a long period of time.
Okay.
Questions, concerns?
Questions, concerns?
Is there anything that could happen that's odd, like when the power gets turned back on, like a surge or anything in the house, that we should unplug anything?
No.
Okay.
You're okay.
Okay. Just got to reset all your clocks.
That's okay.
Yes.
Where it says on the paperwork that we got mailed, it says permission to lane, maintain underground lateral cables and wires. Are they going to be like doing that on our properties at all? I'm like kind of diagonally across.
That pole is going in between those two poles and there's nothing coming off of it that I'm aware of. They're just going to be putting new equipment up on that pole because the other poles adjacent to it don't have the space to put it on there. So we're putting it in line with what's existing.
And these poles will remain?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're in good shape?
I'm going to assume so.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. No... Seeing no more questions? We'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just have one. I'm just going to get my two cents worth in.
Two cents.
Do we have double poles anywhere that you're going to be taking care of?
We do not remove poles any longer.
Okay.
That's all Verizon.
It's what? Old Verizon.
So the previous contract that we had with them, as you get agitated with them, we get agitated with them because we have to wait for poles to go up. But the new contract is we install all the poles, they come in last and they remove all the poles. So any double poles that you may or may not have, Verizon is the one that takes them up.
Okay. Make note of that, Mary. So we will close the hearing for 163 South Street.
Thank you. Be safe out there on Friday. You never know what it's going to bring. It'll blow up, just say, we'll blame the weatherman.
They've been cussing using that S-word.
We do not, I'm assuming, have any more department updates, correct? Okay, then we'll move on to the town administrator report. Like I've been doing for the past few meetings, I'll just pick a couple of sampling of the items on the list. First of all, budget kickoff meetings for FY '21 are scheduled for Tuesday, November 12th at 10:00 a.m. That's going to be primarily for departments. That's actually going to happen inside a department head's monthly meeting, but others are welcome to attend. And then the second one will be on Thursday evening, November 14th at 7:00 p.m., primarily for boards and committees. Board and committee representatives, whether chair or otherwise, can attend. We're not going to worry... I wouldn't worry about a quorum attending.
We're not going to worry, I wouldn't worry about a quorum attending. It's good that everyone hear the information. This really is an informational session with no action required by boards and committees, so everyone's welcome to attend.
Here is that migrant downstairs?
It's going to be down the hall, right here, yes.
218 or whatever it is?
I think we're going to do it in, it's either 218 or we're going to do it in the hearing room. I just haven't. The department heads' meeting is always in 218, so we'll have that one in 218. The evening meeting might be in the hearing room if it's available.
Okay.
The Ag Commission, Community Garden Electrical Upgrades, that service agreement has been executed with Montero Electric for $3,435. That is for this particular phase of the project, to install electrical equipment in and around the garden shed. Laying the conduit is going to come after this piece of the work is done, and we're going to procure that separately. Lisa, Assessor Molly Reed and I had a kickoff phone call with Beth Greenblatt, the town's solar consultant, on the solar pilot negotiations the other day. I think it went pretty well. We just, we have a path forward. Beth is going to serve as our owner's agent consultant, so she is going to do the heavy lifting with getting negotiations in order and trying to make sure the town has the best economic benefit possible. And we are continuing, Chair Keefe and I are continuing on our recreational marijuana, host community agreement negotiations. They are moving slowly, but we want to assure consistency between the contracts, so that's taking a little work and effort to make sure that we have some consistency between all of them. And I want to congratulate the town. Lisa has received a cybersecurity training grant for the town of Berlin. I don't have any details on this yet.
Yep, yep.
But I'd love for you to fill us in. Through the chair, can, sure, if we did.
I believe, basically, we get software that will help us to train our employees so that they can be better at spotting things like phishing and things that can get us into trouble from a cybersecurity standpoint.
So they'll deliver software?
I believe it's a software package.
Like bullying, cyberbullying, all that?
Um, no.
It's more like scams, trying to take money. So, yeah, so that was really good news to hear. We did submit our Safe Roots to School signs and lines grant application last week, and fingers crossed, we'll maybe be one of the few lucky municipalities that receive some grant funding from that. So that's all I have for today. Oh, I shouldn't say that. I have, and I won't throw any more things in later, but the board has for your review a memo that I've prepared to go with the budget packet for FY21. It's just an overview of the fiscal year '21 budget process, and it backs up the accountant's instructions for submission of budget requests, and it backs up the finance committee's expectations on the budget submissions. So if board members have any feedback, comments, we have a few days before I need to finalize this, so feel free to reach out to me. Also attached is the budget, is the draft budget calendar.
And a happy Veterans Day.
I added that, yes, because the board won't be meeting until after Veterans Day, so I wanted to give a shout out to all our men and women who serve this country and who have served this country.
Okay. And we're moving on to old business, licensing rules and regulations. This is a second read, I believe.
Yes, I don't have any further edits that I recommend at this point. I haven't received any feedback from the board, so I would recommend that these be adopted as they are. Now, this would be applicable to all license renewals in the coming year. What I ask is that these, these are informational and should be distributed with all renewed licenses, all the new licenses that are going to be coming up in 2019. I mean, 2020, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
Got me excited. I thought we'd be here younger, Margaret. Jeez, you ruined that.
So are there any comments, more, further comments from the board, or do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Next, we're moving on to the Protective Covenant and Waiver of Town's Right of First Refusal.
Through the board chair, this is one that goes back a number of months. This was a supplemental piece of land added to the larger piece of land for the solar array on Randall Road. We did receive an email back from Conservation Commission today that the Protective Covenant is all set, but this waiver of first refusal, uh, first refusal, first refusal is still outstanding, and I think that the solar developer would like to have this to wrap it up, to file it and get it out of the way.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Absolutely. I'm making them nice and neat for you, so you're all good.
All right. So I guess this is to, the next item is to fill in the public that the offer letter for Richard Hanks as building commissioner, who will start on 11/12 of 2019, has been signed. And is there anything further you want to add, Madam Clerk?
I would ask that the board re-vote in open session, because the open meeting law for, we found the open meeting law for non-union employment contracts, the vote should be taken in open session. So if the board wants to restate its vote on this, I would appreciate that.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the offer letter for Richard?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also the contract amendment and extension for the interim Fire EMS Chief, Ken Clark.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, and the HR Community Compact Supplemental Funding Grant Contract.
Yes, the town did receive $5,000 in supplemental funding for the HR consulting work for updating personnel policies and procedures and developing a classification and compensation plan. I do think we are going to get responses over this next week. We did kind of cast a wide net for quotes to be submitted, and I did hear from a consultant today, and I've heard from another, so hopefully we receive at least one quote from qualified consultants. So this is for the board, the board needs to sign the contract documents or authorize the chair to do that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And is that the contract, Margaret, or I think I have one here?
Let's do it right afterwards, because there's a couple of places.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, moving on to new business. We had a request from Interstate Theaters Corporation, Regal Cinema, Regal Solomon Pond Stadium 15, for a change of corporate officer slash director.
This is a paperwork transaction. No hearing is required on this type of change, so we have the entire packet of documentation, and I would request that the board vote to sign this paperwork.
Motion to sign.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that just the one place on the big stack?
I think that is it.
One place.
Just the front page.
The yellow sticky. I think I, maybe I'm supposed to.
There's room for all of us.
Oh, okay. Well, let me look at it.
All three.
All of us?
Yeah. Oh, it's just to re-sign. Two more originals.
Oh, no, you just need to do one. One's good.
One signature?
One for each of you on that one piece of paper.
Yes. Okay, we will.
Cutting to Margaret's pile.
All right. We have the Personnel Committee's recommendation for FY21, the COLA. Come on down.
Come on down. You are the next contestant on sit at the segment table. You have to sit here. No, you have to sit here.
Oh, okay.
So the camera can catch you.
Sorry. It's been a year already.
Has it really?
I can't believe it. This was our first task last year.
Was it better this year? Or no?
Was it better?
It is. I feel like, Margaret, it's been wonderful having somebody helping us, you know, along in terms of the things that we need to do, and I think so.
Well, there was a lot to do. I mean, there was a huge gap between the old one and the new one, so thank you. Thank you.
And Sue's been helping out tremendously. Tom, he couldn't come tonight, so I think he's still working. So anyway, we use the same process this year for our COLA as we did last year, and that is looking through the consumer price indexes for different areas of New England. We used the Boston, it was the, I'm sorry, Boston, Cambridge, Newton, and that, this year was at 1.1%, which is really low. Last year, the same year, the same time last year, that same consumer price index was 3.3. So this year it's 1.1. This year, the Worcester Consumer Price Index, as a city in the northeast region with 2.5 million or less people, is 1.4%. And then we also looked at what some of the other towns in the municipality and the state are doing, and it runs the gamut. There's some folks that are doing 1%. There's some people that are doing 1.5 and adding another 1% on the day before the end of the fiscal year, so it kind of ran the gamut. We ran it by the committee, and we looked at all the information that we had, and we're making a recommendation that the, that we give a 1.5 cost of living adjustment this year. There are some other things that we want to bring out with that, because that, the 1.5 would be added to our position classification sheets, and I'll have to hand those out if, sorry. Oh, you do have them. Okay, thank you.
I didn't get.
We did perform a compensation analysis on all positions last year. So we're feeling pretty confident, there may be a few here and there that are requested through the performance evaluation process, that we will, we're happy to go over and everything, but right now I think we look pretty good in terms of the processes we've used in the market that people have. We also have the HR consultant coming in to do a classification study for us, which kind of helps us out a little bit because it takes it out of our hands and it lets somebody else come in and take a look at the way we're doing things, how should our compensation system run and everything, so we were very happy about that. We're also going to re-propose, last year we had made some recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, and you had approved it, and we gave it to the accountant, but somehow, some way, the Finance Committee did not approve those changes. So we're going to try and re-propose them again this year to make sure that, because some of them had to do with market, and they had to do with keeping people in sync with what their peers are making in the other towns. So we're going to re-propose that, and we will absolutely continue to look at the positions as we go along. One thing, one position that we missed on the position classification sheet was the Veterans Agent, and we really do want to look that up and see where it should go on the grid. Right now, it's in a grade one, but we'd like to make sure that we're compensating properly for that position.
Yeah, we brought him up to minimum wage because he was very much below, correct?
He was ridiculously underpaid.
Yeah.
Plus, don't forget, we have, as of January 1st, we have a minimum wage increase
from 12 to 1275 an hour, and we have as of, and that's included, that's why there's
two position classification spreadsheets. We also have another minimum wage increase on 1121 of going from 1275 to 1350. So that's why there's two sets of spreadsheets instead of just one. We want to make sure we incorporated that into it.
And that was, I assume, incorporated into the budget, the increase?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions for Clarence Sue?
Thank you. I know it's not easy.
Do we need to take a vote on this?
I think to approve, I think to approve the recommendation, I think that would be a good idea.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you need to stack, Claire?
No.
All right. Board questions and comments?
No, I'm done. I got nothing this week.
Already talked about.
All righty.
Do we have one more before I go?
Well, I think you're going to have to do it offline.
Okay.
Why don't we do it offline?
Okay.
And we do have a need for a quick executive session to approve meeting minutes. This would be Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a7 for the October 28th. I'm assuming, Mary, we're, you've got them, right?
One sec.
The minutes are?
Yes, I have.
Okay. And we will return to open, no, we won't.
Turn to adjourn.
We're only going to return to open session to adjourn.
Vote.
Roll call. Keefe?
One, two, three.
Keefe, aye.
Stone, aye.